I'd like to call the Tuesday, January 21st, 2025 Papillion City Council meeting in order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the roll?
Sunday.
Here.
Mungard. Gaines.
Here.
Glover. Fenslow.
Here.
Cluke.
Here.
Stube.
Here.
Engberg.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. And do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
The current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. Ms. Powers, Administrator's report, please.
Thank you. I have just a couple of things tonight. The Landing will be hosting a health and wellness fair on January 24th from 8:00 a.m. to noon. And vendors will be in the community gym and lobby to cover physical, social, mental, and financial health. And there will be some door prizes and a lot of fun, different activities and things. The next coffee at the cop is Tuesday, January 28th, and that will also be at the Landing. And it's being hosted by the 55-plus club, and that's 9:30 to 11:30 a.m. in the lobby of the Landing. The 55-plus club is also hosting another exciting event, the Valentine's Day Party, which will begin February 14th at 11:00 a.m. in the community gym. And if you want to let Tracy, Robin, or myself know, if you want to volunteer, we'll get you signed up to help. Typically, elected officials and city staff help serve those meals, so if you're available, I know they're looking for volunteers still. And then finally, the League of Nebraska Municipalities Annual Midwinter Conference in Lincoln is coming up. It's February 24th and 25th. Let Robin or myself know if you still want to get registered. The deadline is fast approaching, but we still have time to get you in if you're interested in attending. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Glover.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
7808.
Motion passes. Item D1, Ordinance 2046, an ordinance to amend Section 190-5 of the Papillion Municipal Code to allow for vehicle enforcement in parks and trails. Is there a council member to introduce? Introduced by Councilwoman Cluke. E1, Ordinance 2043, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from LC Limited Commercial to CC Community Commercial for the property legally described as Lot 190 Granite Creek East and Lot 1 Granite Creek East Replat 1, generally located on the northeast corner, south of 102nd Street and Highway 370. The applicant's Joe Torzan, Granite Creek East. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Any proponents? Welcome.
Good evening, members of the council. Randy Kouschak with Lampar Neerson, 14710 West Dodge Road, Omaha, Nebraska, here on behalf of the applicant, Gerald Torzan and BHI Development, Inc. This project is part of the Granite Creek East and West Developments, right around 102nd Street. Let's see if that pulls up. So the subject lots are currently zoned LC Limited Commercial. The applicant is looking to change that to CC Community Commercial for just the two lots that are highlighted, Lot 190 and Lot 1, on the east side of 102nd Street. No direct access from 102nd Street. That will do a shared access with all of the commercial development near 101st Street. The primary driver here is that the developer has interest and has looked to allow for a convenience store to be located on this corner. During the plating process, we kind of worked with staff. Originally, it was kind of identified on the west side, but that had some access concerns and just concerns in general. So that's kind of looked to the east side. So where we're at currently is we'd originally submitted this with a special use permit with a user in mind. With this zoning being along the Highway 370 corridor, there's some heightened design guidelines, and so their documents would need a little bit more work and specialization to be compliant and move forward. So where we're at from this perspective is that we would like to go ahead and move forward with the rezoning to CC, which allows for a special use permit for convenience food sales, so convenience store in that zoning. It'd still be back in front of the boards for any approval for that use, but it's to get that broken free. It's usually a developer-led zoning change to get to that base zoning, and then a potential buyer would come in with their special use permit. So kind of two separate operations, but this tees it up ready for development. And the other thing that the developer wants to do is they want to have all their cards on the table. They don't want people moving into this development, buying in this development, not knowing what's going to happen there, and doing a bait and switch. So that's why we're trying to take care of it now, not wait for that specific user to come forward at this point. We anticipate they'll be coming soon, but get this out of the way so that it's all out on the table. Everybody in the neighborhood knows what's going on, and the developer feels this is a good fit for this area and this small pocket of commercial that will be along 102nd Street. 102nd Street will be a future signal once traffic counts get to the point that it's warranted with the state. And like I said, no direct access to 102nd Street. We don't feel that there's any concerns about any traffic for that use. Our base traffic study actually had considered a C-store-type use here, so it fits within the Developments' original traffic study. With that, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other proponents or opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Item E2, Ordinance 2045, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from R4 Multi-Family Residential to R4 PUD2 Multi-Family Residential with a specific planned unit development overlay for the property legally described as a replating of Lot 1 Trinity Edition Outlet A, Papillion Landing, and tax Lot 12B, Section 27 Township 14 North Range 12 East of the 6PM, Sarpy County, generally located at 520 West Lincoln. The applicant's Emmanuel Retirement Communities, Trinity Replat 1. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Welcome.
Hello. Caleb and Wilden, Lampar Neerson, 147110 West Dodge Road, here on behalf of the applicant. With me, I've got representatives from the applicant and the architecture firm we're working with. If we can kick this on here. So in general, what our project is, is an expansion of the facilities on Emmanuel's Trinity Village campus. It's located off of Lincoln Road. It's a little bit hard to see, but kind of this building here and this building here are the existing retirement units that connects to what was an old church. It's the big red church off of Lincoln that I'm sure you're all familiar with. What we're presenting for you today is a PUD, which would allow us to go for a height waiver of a central podium building. All other zoning regulators are met by our current design, and we've worked with planning staff to work through some of the issues in the planning report and have received kind of a clean bill of health from that and the packet you have before you today.
All right. David Warner with Hall and Bascom Architects, 119 South 49th Street. We're the architect on the project. This site plan shows a little bit clearer in color, the different components. Trinity Courtyard over here is 160 units. The existing independent living building, it's this L-shaped. The existing assisted living building is right there. The blue that Caleb was referencing was the existing Trinity Church. We are adding assisted living addition here, two stories, 10 units total. And then the podium building, which is requesting the waiver for the 50-foot height, that is a podium building, has 48 units in there, 48 garage stalls on the basement floor, and then we have three stories of wood construction above. And then out at the very front, along Lincoln Street, we have a lower-scale, one-to-two-story Villa Rose that we're proposing right there. It's really important, in the placement of this, to, along Lincoln Street, keep the height down and relate it to the neighborhoods to the south. And then the podium building, which really completes the profitability in the unit counts that they want, that they desire. We located that about 300 feet back towards the center of the development there.
Hi. Rhonda DiStefano, 8402 Babakai Drive in Hawaiian Village. I'm with Emmanuel, VP of Construction and Facilities. We're super excited about this project. This is something that we've wanted to do for several years and really want to reutilize the church as quickly as possible. It's been vacant now for a few years. And we are using the church in its current state, taking advantage of the structure and the height of that building, the interior, and just the legacy of that building here in Papillion. The new construction that we're doing, what it's going to allow is to broaden our offerings to the senior population in Papillion. Currently, we have the HUD housing over on the west. We have market rate, independent living, and assisted living there in those existing buildings. And what we're doing with this new podium building is we're able to introduce another level of independent living to our population. We'll be doing a more higher level of finish in the new build and then converting the existing independent living into an offering that's kind of more of a middle market, trying to find something that covers the whole spectrum of all income levels here in Papillion. We're also rightsizing our assisted living by adding 10 more units there. And then the row houses in the front, that's kind of a first-stage entry-level housing. We're trying to get our younger seniors into something that, you know, they can be, you know, less maintenance and more comfortable in their living arrangements. Any questions?
Yeah, I do. How many villas are there? I'm sorry, I heard 10 units and 48 units.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one there?
Yes.
And will those villas primarily be singles or doubles? How many occupancies are you expecting?
Their size, where they could be single or dual occupancy, they'll have attached garages. Some will be one-car garages, some will be two-car garages. And we're actually looking to possibly add some that would have a loft in there so that it's not just a straight, you know, row house, but to give it some height and some variance so that it fits in with the neighborhood across the street.
Right. Very good. Very good. And is that the same with your assisted? Most of those can be one or two occupancy?
Correct. We have more one bedrooms than two bedrooms in assisted. That's just what the demographic asks for. But yeah, and then one and two bedrooms also in the new podium build.
Very good.
Okay. Our first-phase construction will be everything that you see there, with the exception of the townhouses or row houses in the front. That would be a phase-two construction after we kind of get the other buildings up and start to get them filled up. And the other thing that's super exciting is we will be renovating the entire commons area of the existing building and bringing that up to a higher standard.
Mr. Fenslow?
Yeah, I have a question. So you were describing what's going on here. The rectangle on the piece of property on the west side of this?
Right here?
That's part of the existing housing? What did you refer to that as?
That is HUD housing.
HUD housing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Can you explain what's going on there?
Nothing is going on with this particular project.
Sure.
It stays as is.
Yep.
But it's part of the Emmanuel campus.
Okay.
And that was built, I think the original building was built in '05 or '07. It was built in four phases, funded through the HUD 201 program.
Okay.
And so that remains as is. Those folks will have the ability, and they do now, to come over to the other side of the campus and utilize our wellness center, to utilize the food program, to get, you know, healthcare and so forth.
Can you explain, did you call it a 202 program?
201 program.
201 program.
Mm-hmm.
Got one heady. Can you explain what that is?
No longer exists.
So what was it?
It was independent living funding for senior living.
Okay.
Particularly.
Okay.
We used it. Jolene Roberts used that program several years ago down in Bellevue.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Stube? Do you have something?
Basically, I have.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other council questions? Mr. Sunday?
I wondered, is there an artist's rendition of the podium building?
Yeah.
That we could see?
He read your mind. He brought that for us.
Just in case. So with the submission, we're always looking at these 2D renderings, and I don't think that really kind of shows the three-dimensionality of the project. So this kind of depicts that. If everybody can see, Lincoln Street is running right here, and you can kind of see the one- and two-story villas, and then it starts going up to the four-story podium building right there. And you can kind of see the existing church building back there.
Any other questions? Any other proponents or opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Item F1, Ordinance 2036, an ordinance to amend Section 20520, Funeral Services of Article III Use Types, Table 20538, Permitted Uses by Zoning District of Article IV Zoning District Regulations and Section 205202, Commercial Uses of Article 33 Commercial Use Regulations of Chapter 205 Zoning Having to Do with Regulations for Funeral Services. This was postponed from the December 17th council meeting. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 2036?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Gaines? Do you have a second? Second by Councilman Glover. Mr. Mungard, you'd made notice that you had a motion to amend. Is that correct?
That's correct. At this time, I would make a motion to amend Ordinance 2036 with the amendment that has been included in the posted council agenda.
It's a long amendment. I'm wondering, do I need to summarize it? Everybody's got it. It was posted.
I will summarize it. I'll just work with what the staff-
Yeah, briefly summarize it, and then we'll see if there's a second.
I'll work with what the staff has given us. What it does is roughly four things. It changes the names of the funeral homes to eliminate the term mortuary. We were told by people in the industry that that will be confusing because many funeral homes use the term mortuary that have nothing to do with cremation, including the one up the street here. So instead, it changes the names and uses the name "a funeral home with no crematorium" and "a funeral home with a crematorium." It draws the distinction that was always there in the ordinance, that a funeral home either has a crematorium or not. The funeral home without a crematorium would be basically what you saw before under the term funeral home, and the one with a crematorium would be basically, under the term, what we saw before, mortuaries. But the term mortuaries is removed from the definitions there. My experience with writing ordinances in government tells me that, yes, you write something that seems very clear at the time, and then 20 years later, when the people who were involved aren't around, it's very confusing, and next thing you know, permitting issues have popped up and everything. So at the suggestion of the local funeral home, I've removed that term mortuary as one of the three kinds of businesses. It updates the table so that the, there's no change in where a funeral home without a crematorium would be or could be, and there's no change in where a crematorium by itself, not offering funeral home services, could be also. The latter one would be industrial areas with a buffer, and the buffer slightly changes. The other one, the funeral home without a crematorium, would be, could be in some residential areas, but it's the same as what the original ordinance said. What it does is it changes the locations where a funeral home with a crematorium could be located. They could be located by special use permit in the LC Limited Commercial area or in the CC Community Commercial District, and by right in the General Commercial District and in the two industrial areas that were in the original ordinance. Basically, in the two commercial areas that have lower density and are more likely to be nearby to residential properties, they would have to come before the council and get permission with a special use permit. But it does not, but it opens the door that they're no longer restricted to the two industrial areas. And then it does eliminate the buffer requirement that would apply to, well, the buffer requirement that would have applied to mortuaries, that is, businesses with a crematorium. And then it modifies the buffer for the crematorium alone in that it's 1,000 foot from the building to the lot line, basically eliminating the parking lots. And so I propose that amendment.
And as you're going through that, I'm looking at the red-line version. I think that covered everything in the red-line version that everybody's got. So if the motion's understood, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stube? Proponents or opponents on the motion to amend? Council discussion on the motion to amend. Mr. Mungard?
Well, okay, I'll explain a little bit why I'm bringing forward this motion to amend. I just feel that the original ordinance, as introduced, is far too severe, and it's unnecessary, and it's likely to make it too expensive and difficult for funeral homes with crematoriums to locate Papillion in the future. It basically chases these businesses away, announces, "We don't want you here." If adopted, it would make Papillion the only government in Nebraska and Iowa to take that extreme position. The proposed ordinance apparently is brought forth because of protests we heard back in 2022 for a proposed funeral home with cremation. Most of us were here at the time. The protests, in my view, were very extreme, unreasonable, and irrational, and they were so far that way that the applicant actually, after listening to the protest, just withdrew, walked away, basically saying he didn't want to have anything to do with Papillion. Basically, the protesters made claims that I think were generated out of fear, you know, fear of ghosts and other spooky vapors and ashes that would be coming out of the building's exhausts. We heard that. You can look it up. That's what some of the things were being said. It was not a business-friendly message at all. And I certainly, when I watched the applicant walk out of here, I could tell he had a very anti-Papillion view. Well, that's not the way I want our city to be perceived. I don't want it to be perceived that council decisions are made based on irrational thoughts and irrational fears and any old stuff you can read on the internet. I want them to be based upon fact and logical thinking. This is the type of business that has existed throughout the nation, including the Omaha area, for generations without any local regulation, such as what this ordinance proposes. And it's a business that serves a very useful purpose for people who have lost their loved ones. The state of Nebraska and the federal environment protection agencies, they do regulate and control the equipment and the methods used inside the business and requires permits for exhaust, just like for any business, just like for the barbecue restaurant down the street. But no further regulation is needed to protect people nearby. Human cremation is becoming increasingly used with over 51% of all funerals involving, in Nebraska, involving cremation, 51% or more. So it's a business that is needed. People want it, and yet the proposed ordinance was effectively chasing them out of Papillion. So you know, and the fact that they exist, have existed for years, and they exist in nearby cities, it seems that we're now taking the position that we know better than the federal and state agencies and other local agencies. We've been told by people in the industry that the proposed ordinance would just make it too expensive for a business to come into Papillion because they would have to go to the industrial area, and they'd have to have this huge 1,000-foot setback, including the parking lot being set back. It would just be too expensive. A, you would not find a good location, and B, it would be too expensive to do it. So basically, I look at it, if we choose to pass this ordinance without any amendment as it's proposed, we have effectively shut down Papillion for any combination funeral home crematorium. You know, the buffers that are proposed around there, I went on Google, I Google-mapped them, and I found that, yes, they would effectively eliminate a whole lot of places. I was also struck by that the buffers that are required by the proposed regulation, you know, are the only ordinances, that's the only ordinance we have with buffer zones, except the ordinance that restricts porn shops and topless dancing, sexually oriented businesses. And I say, what? We're equating in some fashion these funeral homes with crematoriums with the sexually oriented businesses? So my proposed amendment continues to regulate the location of these businesses. Don't get me wrong. I don't personally totally agree with that. I don't think they need to be regulated, but I'm willing to compromise. And what it says basically, in the less heavily-developed commercial areas that are more likely to impact nearby residential, somebody has to come in here and get a permit. If there's objections, we don't need a buffer zone. If there is objections, we can decide them when they come in here for the permit. In the heavily-developed commercial areas that are less likely to be near business, you know, that are less likely to be near where people live, I see no threat to the people, and so they locate there as a matter of right. So I present this amendment because I think we need to have some rational regulation of a business that will be increasingly needed by our residents. If we adopt the proposed ordinance, effectively, we are saying to them, "Go away. We don't do that here." That's the message of the proposed ordinance, as I see that. So that's why I'm bringing forth the amendment.
Mr. Fenslow?
Tom, thanks for all your work on this topic. Okay. Tom, thanks for all your work. I know you've put a lot of time and effort, and you've talked to quite a few people. You've done your own research. You reached out to me a few times, so I appreciate that. And I'm about 95% there with you. I have a little bit of an issue, and it might be a cleanup issue. I don't know if we can achieve that tonight or if it's in the future. I was probably going to motion for a layover to maybe clear up some of my concerns with Section J, but since there's already a motion and a second on the floor, I'll just tell you what my issues are. So Section J talks about the buffer yards, and it talks about the 1,000-foot buffer yard and the 500-foot buffer yard. As you know, the 1,000-foot buffer yard lists out, I think, all of the residential zoning districts except for mobile homes, and it's a residential zoning district, so I felt that, why did we leave out mobile homes, right? So we don't have very many mobile home developments in our community, but who knows in the future? So I felt, I feel that mobile homes should be included in Section J. And then when it comes to Section J itself, the title, it's Funeral Services Crematoriums, I wasn't on the council when you all heard the case up on 96th and 370, but what I heard, sitting in the back, was the crematorium is a problem, the crematorium is a problem. And the way you have this drafted is if a crematorium all by itself is within a certain distance from certain uses, then it requires a special use permit. But Section J doesn't talk about the funeral home with the crematorium. And I guess I don't understand, if we're trying to separate other uses from a crematorium, what does it matter if it's standalone or if it's part of a funeral home? So other than that, I think it's really good, but I do, I guess I wish I would have the opportunity to maybe hit you up before tonight, and we exchanged a few emails, but those are my issues with Section J. I like- I like the way it's laid out in the table. So that's all I had to say, and I guess I'll make my mind up when we vote. Thanks.
So just to provide a little more history, after the meeting, I mean, I listened to everybody that came in and, you know, they had their concerns about chemicals and there were some things that might have been ridiculous, there weren't fact-based concerns. One of the biggest things that I listened to was, it's a known fact that these crematoriums, and by the way, I'm not anti-crematorium. My father and my aunt, in the last four years, are both cremated, so I'm very pro-crematorium, but I'm very pro of citizen health also. But it's a very well-known fact that these crematoriums produce mercury. If the, the studies, the limited studies that have ever been done of any of these crematoriums have shown that mercury levels near the crematorium are extremely high. And as we know, mercury in excess can be dangerous to humans, especially pregnant women. And so after the meeting, I went to the city, I talked to Mr. Gibbons. I said, hey, we need to put together some sort of ordinance. And I said, if you can look at other municipalities. I said specifically, if you can keep these crematoriums away from residential areas, areas like, you know, Shadow Lake, where, you know, in that meeting, we heard the, the person that wanted to bring the funeral home in with the crematorium in it, that sometimes thick black smoke billows out of these crematoriums when either a mistake is made, bodies are being cremated too quickly, obesity can cause it, sometimes it just could be wood from caskets. But I wanted to make sure that people sitting down in Shadow Lake eating didn't have this crematorium smoke coming on them. And so the ordinance that the city came up with was one for the, the things that I asked and we separated funeral homes and funeral homes with crematoriums or crematoriums, there were just some things that needed to be done. But the bottom line is, is that I believe that in this instance, the city created an ordinance, it went to public safety, it went to planning commission, and I believe we let the city make the ordinances, not, I mean, I generally don't rewrite an entire ordinance that the city presents. This is, went through the process. Mr. Mungard has a lot more confidence in the federal government with regulating things than I do. The federal government thought it was a good idea in Vietnam to spray Agent Orange, and we've seen what that happens. The federal government thought it was a good idea in the Middle East to have burn pits. We've seen what that happens. You know, we just have to use some common knowledge, let planning do their planning. I think it's a good ordinance as written, and I won't support the amendment.
Mr. Sunday.
I think we should pay more respect to a large citizen group that takes the time out of their busy schedules to come up here and voice their opinions on something that's going to affect their life and potentially their health and not dismiss them as a bunch of kooks or radicals. That's really disrespectful. And don't, please don't paint with a broad brush everybody that came just because one might have made a ridiculous comment. That's unfair as well. Now, I haven't heard yet why there's a pressing need for a crematorium in a residential area. What's wrong with putting them in the industrial areas where they belong? I haven't heard any need. We're not chasing away funeral home services from Papillion. We have them now. If you want to get a cremation for your loved one, it's available. I too have had family members that were cremated here in Papillion. And it's not a problem, trust me. So why we think we need to put them into a residential area where the dust is going to settle on people's cars? The mercury over time builds up. Freshwater fish, by the way, already is heavier in mercury, mercury content than saltwater fish. And we have fishing lakes around here, near residential areas. And over time, that mercury doesn't go away. It sinks to the bottom, the fish ingest it, and that is a fact. So I guess I just summarize by saying I am not opposed to crematoriums. I think they have a place and there is a need, for sure, but, but not in, why in a residential neighborhood? I don't get that. And, and do we want to have, if, if these amendments pass as proposed, every time somebody wants to come into town and put in a crematorium in a neighborhood near homes, we're going to have a controversial issue every time for this council now and into the future. Why don't we just decide right now that we don't want crematoriums in residential areas and be done with it? That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Mungard.
I will start by answering Mr. Fenslow's questions. Section J, basically, I chose to leave it alone mostly. It was the section that was sent to the council and implicitly approved by the committee that saw this, you and Mr. Stube. So I thought, well, you know, it's not a section that impacts particularly what I'm talking about, so all I'm going to do is change the buffer zone so that we're not, you know, pretending that parking lots should be part of the buffer zone. I didn't pay any attention to whether it did or did not include mobile homes, and I have no objection to adding that. We can either add that tonight or in the future. I would, I would point out that what it's talking about is the standalone crematorium, which is basically an industrial building with an industrial purpose. It is the place where funeral homes, such as Kaler Dos up the street, they contract and send their bodies to this location to do, for nothing, no purpose, other than to be cremated. That's different than the funeral home with cremation. That is a combination service to the people who want to come and have a funeral service. It's no different than any other funeral service, funeral home you've ever been into. It just, it just combines the cremation activity typically in the back, in the back end. It's both an efficiency. More important to me, as I've read through the, searched the internet and visited funeral homes like this, it has with something, what is typically called in the industry, witness cremation. It has a viewing area. It's not the industrial building like the crematorium. It has a viewing area because many religions encourage, if not require, people to go observe the beginning of the cremation. Many people want to do that. I will, if you give me a moment, I'll just, personally, I've had this conversation with my wife who wants to, says she wants to be cremated, and I've assured her, I will be there at the very last. And so, yes, I personally know that if that, if that situation arises, I need one of these combination funeral homes. I can tell you that if the current ordinance passes and my wife passes away, you know, while this is in effect, her funeral will not be in Papillion because the ordinance cuts me off. That's only a personal aside, that's not, you know, I, but I can relate that there are people who, who feel the same way, who want to be there till the final end. I see no difference from the funerals I've attended. My parents, for example, where we go to the cemetery, and I stood there and I watched the casket lowered to the, into the grave and the vault sealed. It's the same thing. And that's how I've heard it discussed in, on the internet and people talking about what the industry calls witness cremation. So I say, that's different than what Section J is talking about. And if you want to amend Section J, clarify all that, I can work with you, I don't have any problems with that. I just chose to leave it alone. I, I understand, you know, the comments that are made about the mercury, I've read that too. I've also read clarifications that the, that the emission of mercury through the exhaust of a crematorium is generally coming from the melting down of dental implants. And that the industry recommends removing those dental implants before so you don't have that. I also read, I guess you have to take my word for it, that the use of that, I can't tell you what mineral it is that being, has been used in the past, but that is becoming less and less now. We just don't, they just don't do that for dentals. So the fear, and I will say fear because I think that's what it is, that these things, these types of places are releasing mercury levels that are hurting people. I sit there and I wonder, well, why are we not seeing impact on people in all the, in Omaha, in all the cities around here that have had, you know, cremation for years and decades, decades through generations? So I think, well, that's, yeah, that, that's a, a concern we don't need to base our regulation on. I understand that, no, the city staff wrote this. Well, thank you very much, but they don't adopt it, they're not responsible for that. I, they, they did a very good job and I worked with them in making the modifications that I wanted. As far as not having any confidence in, you know, in the federal and state government that has the position, they could regulate this, they could say that there's something dangerous about this, and they don't. You know, I don't, I don't want to sit here and pretend that I know more about what comes out of those, those crematorium exhausts than do the people who work in the Environmental Protection Agency and the state equivalent. I'm not going to pretend that I know more than they do. If they don't think that it needs to be rigged, needs to be prohibited, I'll go along with them. The black smoke, I've read about that too. And sure, that's, that's icky. That gives you a squeeze, you know, a bad feeling when you see that. I'm told that is somebody doing something wrong. And primarily, it's something other than the body being burnt, that the packaging or things like that. Sometimes people are cremated in their coffin. And when that happens, well, it's no different than burning wood in a fireplace. So yes, I don't, I don't just, I don't say black smoke doesn't happen, it just is not something that creates a danger to anybody. As far as, why not just go ahead and put them in the industrial area? Well, I, we all got the map, it was with the material. What the proposed ordinance does is it puts them in three, four, three, four, you know, modest sized areas out there around the, you know, around the trucking companies and the refuges, the waste areas, industrial area. And, and that's why they were, I was being told by the industry that this would make it too expensive to locate here, simply because, you know, number one, you're, if you put them in the industrial area, you're hiding them. And then secondly, then you have this big buffer that you have to buy in this big area, and it's just an unappealing, unattractive place to put them. So people in the industry have told me, I don't think anybody would be locating there. Maybe that, I hope that's responded to some of the questions that have been raised.
If there are further questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them. Ms. Klug.
Thank you. You know, I'm, I'm pro-business. I think that the city of Papillion needs to keep our doors open, and this is another business that has a right to locate within the city limits of Papillion. It would provide a very necessary service. Not a one of us is getting out of this alive, you know? So we're all going to need something, and this is a business that is trying to set up, whoever it may be in the future to come, to help us when a loved one is passed away. You know, they're now called celebrations of life because we're trying to figure out more about what the person's life has represented. There are different ways of honoring that person's life, whether it's religious, if it's in the funeral home, or if it's in the crematorium. Why not in an industrial area? I've heard that question a couple times. Because many families are starting to choose to go to the crematorium and be there and witness and see what it's doing. And I don't want to pick on any other business, but do I really want to sit there trying to celebrate the life of a loved one or a friend and have semis and motorcycles and construction equipment going like crazy because I'm in an industrial area? This is about people's lives and celebrating the deceased's life. And so having it in a respectful area, business area, and business areas can be close to residential. But I feel like we need to be respectful of families that may want to partake of that and keep these facilities in reasonable locations. You know, I've read quite a few studies looking at this, and I remember hearing the concerns and having my doorstep knocked on when people were fighting the first crematorium that came in. And the studies that I've read, none of them come up in straight, well, the ones I have read, and I want to be very clearly on that, they don't say this will cause, they say it may cause. Took me about 30 seconds on Google to call it up. I simply Googled cremations and mercury, and the very first one I read says, "Risk assessment found no indication that ground level exposures to elemental mercury vapor from cremations poses a significant risk to human health." 30 seconds, and I can find out that there's not a strong conclusion saying this is going to cause problems. On a personal aspect or a personal note, I come from a community that had one of the first crematoriums in the state of Nebraska. It's a small community with 500 people in it. Health risks, it's been there since the late 80s, early 90s. It is used multiple times a week, sometimes a couple times a day. And you know what? Those people are living well into their 80s and 90s. So the research about what these vapors and fumes and ash just don't seem to be playing out in the reality that I live in. Thank you.
Mr. Sunday.
Google and the U.S. government, both are guilty of claiming that the COVID-19 vaccine was both safe and effective, and it was neither. And that was just a couple of years ago. So I'm not going to put my blind faith into Google or any other first thing that comes up on the internet because they, the companies push what they want people to see to come up first. You can't get to other opinions until you go several pages back, I'm sure, but that's just the way those search engines are set up. So I wouldn't put my blind faith in that with, with respect, I wouldn't.
Ms. Klug.
Just so I can give it a reference, this is the Canadian Journal of Public Health in June of 2020. So it's not a random source. I did dig down three or four of them and didn't take the first one.
Any other council discussion? See none? This is on the motion to amend. Yes vote will approve the motion to amend, and no would turn it down and leave the original motion as presented. Please vote.
Five As, two Nays, by Sunday and Gaines.
So the motion to amend passes, so the motion is amended. Any other discussion on the motion as amended? If not, please vote.
Five As, two Nays, by Sunday and Gaines.
Motion passes. Next item, F2, Ordinance 2039, an ordinance to amend fiscal year 2024/2025 budget. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 2039?
Motion.
Most by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Gaines. Any discussion? Please vote.
Seven A's, zero Nays.
Motion passes. Item F3, ordinance 2041, an ordinance to amend section 9-26, 9-28 through 932 and chapter 179 of the Papillion Municipal Code to coincide with current practice of the tree board. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2041? Motion by Councilman Klug? Second by Councilman Fanslow. Any discussion? Please vote.
Seven A's, zero Nays.
Motion passes. F4, ordinance 2044, an ordinance to amend Papillion Municipal Code, section 5128, to update and harmonize with amendments to Nebraska revised statute 49-1499.03. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2044? Motion by Councilman Sunday? Second by Councilman Mumgarth. Any discussion? Please vote.
Seven A's, zero Nays.
Motion passes. F5, resolution R250011, a resolution to accept dedications of Street Rightofway for two tracks at the intersection of South 90th and Devon Drive. Is there a motion to approve resolution R250011? Motion by Councilman Fanslow? Second by Councilman Stube. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion. Ms. Klug.
Thank you. I'm good with this ordinance. I think it's all good. It's wonderful to see development coming in. Like I said earlier, I'm pro-business. I think it's going to help us in the end. My concern comes with 90th Street, and that's where the relation is here. I don't know how many of you have the opportunity to drive 90th Street, but I would love to invite every one of you to come out to 370, turn north, and try to turn onto my street right there on Devon. The lights got taken down probably eight weeks ago, give or take, and it is extremely dark. I don't know if that is poor planning on the developers' side, if it's poor planning on the construction manager's side, but it's certainly not a healthy situation. My hat is off. I know city personnel has tried to reach out to Omaha Public Power District, I believe is who they reached out to, and has asked them to help us fix that. But I just, I want it to be known that I really wish that contractors, developers, general contractors need to think about the residents that are already living in these areas and how they're affecting them, their quality of life, and their safety. I know that there's been at least two cars that, maybe they're driving too fast, maybe they're driving too slow, but they have hit curbs and they have hit big boulder stones because they just simply didn't see them in the darkness. So just, I guess I'm just venting a frustration with how that has not been managed by what's going on. But I agree with this ordinance. Thank you for hearing me out.
Situation again. Reach out to OPBD again, see if there's anything else, and give you an update on that. If there's anything recent, thank you. Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Seven A's, zero Nays.
Motion passes. Next couple of items are related. F6, resolution R250012, a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a comprehensive plan amendment to update the master plan is adopted and approved by the Sarpy County and City's Wastewater Agency. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Any proponents or opponents? Seen none or closed public hearing? Is there a motion to approve resolution R250012? Motion by Councilman Gaines? Second by Councilman Stube. Any council discussion? I'll just note, the agency did approve this, and really what it's doing is updating the phases on that growth map to how we had been managing anyway. Some of it, I think, had been by general agreement, but this codifies it, and so this is in Papillion's benefit. Any other discussion? Please vote.
Seven A's, zero Nays.
Motion passes. F7, resolution R250013, a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a comprehensive plan amendment to adopt the southeast Sarpy Road Network Plan. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Any proponents? I'll make, I'll note the map is here, and I think the engineer's here, so welcome. Good to see you.
Yeah, I'm with Felsberg-Holtz Olavig, 14606 Branch Street. Good to see some of you again from my MAPPA days. So we were hired by the county to work on the southeast Sarpy County Road Network Plan and worked with City Papillion, their staff, City Bellevue, Wastewater Agency, and it was a good collaborative effort to work on this project here, so. Do I have control here, or do you advance it? All right, so the study area was for the southeastern portion of the kind of undeveloped area of Sarpy County. So from Cape Heart Road south, the Platteview Road, 72nd Street over to 36th Street. Kind of an interesting area. Let me go back up here a couple slides here. You can see where the picture there, there's a reason the section line roads don't go through historically, a lot of terrain challenges, you know, agricultural land. So for years, this area has not been developed in terms of a transportation plan. Even in the future comprehensive plans, there wasn't a lot of road network planned. Now we have the Wastewater Agency putting in infrastructure. You have the Oakleaf Development has gone in and many other developments planned. Schools have plans for the area, so the county kind of took the lead, and with the city said, let's develop a plan and look at this area of the county for the future. So went out, did a alternatives review. If there's a thought of where a road could potentially go to connect this area, we probably looked at it. We call this the spaghetti bowl map, so all those red lines represent an alternative that was considered and looked at. So we dug in deep to all the different issues. As we considered the different possibilities, we're looking at property impacts, obviously with traffic flow and continuity, you know, how would the transportation system work? Looking for the future of economic development potential. I should mention, if you see on the southern side of that is the future Platteview Road Expressway. So that was kind of given to us as a given for the study. We were not analyzing or evaluating the Platteview Road corridor, but it's the southern boundary of the study. So we were given that to consider, and that'll have huge economic development impacts for the future. Looking at the environment and natural resource impacts, we've got the Harvey Reservoir and some other, some riparian corridors with creeks and streams in the area to consider as well, and of course, fiscal considerations with the cost. As we narrowed this down to a couple final alternatives, we did do some public outreach. The county led a website. We had a public meeting at the county, April of 2024, is very well attended, had over 110 attendees. Generally heard very positive feedback. I think the public was interested to see how this area would develop. Lot of good questions, but not a lot of, you know, negative concerns. The landowners in the area, there's a lot of larger landowners in this corridor, so obviously very interested, but they were participating, and the county in particular had a lot of conversations with them. I also mentioned we had conversations with the school districts, the Sarpy County Wastewater Agency, Papio NRD, utilities, so there's a lot of conversations, stakeholder meetings as part of this process. Kind of the analysis and considerations, you can kind of go through the litany there of everything that's looked at. Of course, the traffic, looked at the rights of way. So at the end of this, we did some pretty detailed, pretty detailed analysis for a planning study. Actually got plan and profile sets where you show the evaluations of the recommended alternatives. Some planning level cost estimates were done as part of this. Doug Halverson's, you know, very accomplished landscape architect. He's retired now, but we kind of dragged him out of retirement, and he developed a vision, really kind of thinking about how would developers see this corridor and what can this do in terms of a gateway to the area as it develops out? And so some of those concepts were incorporated into the final recommendations. So this is kind of a real quick snapshot of the recommendations that came out of this study. So the major north-south, kind of that black and clear dashed line, that 60th Street, and then the east-west, major black and white dashed line there is Fairview on the west, 72nd Street, kind of dips down and then curves over to tie into Schneecloth Road. So those would be kind of your major arterial streets. There would also be connector-through streets as the development comes in. But these would be kind of the ones, the corridors you'd be looking to protect as landowners sell and development comes in to protect those. There's also, you know, you see the green dots kind of outline some potential trail and greenway corridors that could be used as, you know, really big important quality of life benefit that residents are looking for today. So we have some cost estimates on there. Sarpy County has indicated that they're willing to, you know, partner with cities as these areas develop and to, you know, kind of help protect the corridors and develop these. One of the things that did come up as you go up to 370, 66th Street has an intersection today. 60th Street does not have the full access intersection. We did talk with the state DOT, and they indicated that if the local jurisdictions, cities and counties approached them, that they'd be willing to put in a full access intersection at 60th Street, assuming this vision comes to fruition. So that's a quick 30,000-foot overview, but I don't know if we're taking questions, but we'd be happy to take questions if you want to do that.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Any other proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve resolution R250013? Motion by Councilman Stube? Second by Councilman Sunday. Any discussion? Please vote.
Seven A's, zero Nays.
Motion passes. We'll jump to the other end of our jurisdiction. Resolution R250014, a public hearing and a vote. Resolution to approve a comprehensive plan amendment to adopt the Western Sarpy Transportation Enhanced Plan, we step. It's a public hearing. Welcome.
Thank you. Jim Warner with MAPPA, 2222 Coming Street, Omaha. Sorry, I'm going to try to find the presentation. We'll just go ahead and go from here. So through the Heartland 2050 planning study, City of Gretna submitted an initial plan to look at future road networks in around their area. Quickly identified that that was going to take cross jurisdiction work, so joined by Sarpy County, Springfield, and of course, the City of Papillion, we've put together a long-range collaborative transportation plan. So as Greg mentioned with the previous one, a lot of stakeholder involvement, very excited about that, and really just taking a look at a long-range plan that had input from all the stakeholders. I'm going to turn over the rest of the presentation to Jason, but happy to take any questions if there are after the presentation.
All right, thank you. And I'm going to get this in presentation mode. Jason Carby, I'm a transportation planner with HDR 1917, South 67th Street, Omaha. So I can answer any questions you might have and go into more details. I'm going to keep this really high level and get through these pretty quick. So essentially, our study area was kind of west of what Greg was talking about. We are south of Schram, basically all the way to the plat and west of about 60th Street. So really, like, you know, we were talking about with Jim, looking at establishing what this long-term, you know, getting a connected network, you know, avoid some of the issues you know Greg talked about with some of the connectivity, get out in front of growth as we kind of look at, you know, that future South Sarpy growth area with the sewer system. So really worked across jurisdictions to, you know, look at all of the different types of travel we might have in the future, how, you know, be flexible and accommodate, have all of the jurisdictions kind of agree to a common set of standards so when communities grow together, our street networks grow together, you know, how do we kind of plan and get out in front of that? I'm not going to go into a ton of detail, but essentially, you know, Greg talked about that South Sarpy Expressway along Platteview and Fluke Road. That's also shown all the way through our study area to the west. We've got different types of arterials, but essentially what we're doing is kind of reserving that one-mile grid for future arterials. I'm going to walk through what some of those look like. The main one that we look at for mobility type for these corridors are 168th Street and 192nd. These tie up into a future potential interchange at I-80, and also kind of tie into the larger network already to the north. And so these are the biggest corridors that we've reserved. 150-foot of right-of-way would be dedicated with these corridors as developers come in in plat land. And so in all of these, I'm going to walk through, again, these two corridors are the ones that have the most room for future growth and flexibility. Up to six lanes, turn lanes. Part of the recommendations here are also having a side path or a trail adjacent to every single one-mile arterial as we develop. Also providing a little bit of separation between those trails for safety and a little, you know, making it a better user experience. Similar to what you've said, when we had our stakeholder groups and met with economic development folks, one of the things they really talked about was making people really want, you know, to live and work in places with trails and amenities like this.
Just a quick clarification, that profile is only 168th and 192nd.
Those two are, yep, so here's where.
So that's not in our jurisdiction at all?
Correct, yep. So everything else in the study area will be 110 feet for those future arterials. So that's about extra five feet on each side of the road compared to what we typically do. And what that gets you is the ability to have that wider side path, more separation between traffic and people using that side path, the ability to kind of flex with that potentially for, you know, if some of these kind of urbanize in the future and we start getting more urban-scale development, you know, how could we, you know, if we get kind of a mixed-use node, how can we, you know, flex to that, allow amenities like transit service, things like that, on-street parking? And so this gives us some flexibility to kind of react as, you know, the study area develops over time. And so, you know, one of the things we really looked at is obviously, you know, when we look at this, this is the ultimate kind of eventually, might have four lanes, you know, nice median, trails on each side, and sidewalks and that separation. Understanding that, you know, this isn't what's going to happen with every corridor right-of-way. So how do we come up with a logical way to grow into these corridors? So typically, the first step is with that interim that you can see at the top. We go with a three-lane urban-type cross-section, start building the curb and gutter and sidewalks on one side. And as we go through that process, eventually, when it gets into a widening and the need to get more lanes, you can reuse part of that urban infrastructure. Again, part of this was driven by making sure we're trying to be cost-effective as we go through and implement this. I'm not going to go into a ton of details other than, you know, generally a similar set of standards that all of the jurisdictions agreed to. It was a great partnership between the cities and Sarpy County in terms of kind of agreeing to, you know, what these lanes, you know, access standards, all of this ought to look like in the future. One of the more interesting notes also, and I think your city's been a good kind of leader in this, is that a collector policy, kind of laying forward, you know, the ability to identify which sections made the most sense to have future collectors on the half-mile to keep some of that local traffic off of the arterial system to kind of forestall the need to widen where we can. And also, you can see we've shown some cross-sections that'll keep traffic speeds pretty slow and focus on safety. And the last slide really is that, you know, this plan also kind of defaults to a safety approach, trying to introduce slower speeds, roundabouts where they make sense. And so that's been kind of a guiding vision for all the jurisdictions in this area as well. That was quick. Let me know if you have any questions.
Mr. Stube.
Yeah, Jason, I don't know if this is part of your study, but the future interchange, which is along I-80, and I'm assuming it will tie in with Platteview Road in the future, is that part of this study? Was that, kind of give an update with regard to where we are and how long it's going to take?
That's more your project if you want to give an update on that.
So MAPPA did complete the Sarpy-I-80 interchange PEL a number of years ago. NDOT does have an ongoing project right now that looks at identifying, 168th and 192nd were recommended by that study. It was only a planning-level environmental study, and so now part of that, the next task is really identifying that location. That's not been done, submitting that application then for ensuring we get a U.S. Department of Transportation approval to add access along I-80 at one of those points as chosen.
Any other questions? Thank you. Any other proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve resolution R250014? Motion by Councilman Stube? Second by Councilman Glover. Any discussion? Please vote.
Seven A's, zero Nays.
Motion passes. I want to thank everybody for all the work. It's been going on for a long time. And really what this is trying to avoid is where the jurisdictions come together. You think right now, if you're not on Cape Heart or 370 and you want to get from here to Bellevue, you can't do it because roads just stop development. So this really brought all the jurisdictions together to kind of rationalize that that comes together. So thanks for all the work on that, on both sides. Appreciate it. F9, resolution R250015, a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a preliminary plat for the property legally described as a replating of Lot 1, Trinity Edition Out Lot A, Papillion Landing and Tax Lot 12B, Section 27 Township 14 North Range 12 East, 6:00 PM. Generally located 520 West Lincoln. The applicant's a manual. I'll take all the comments from the I'll take all the comments from the prior public hearing and carry them forward, but it is a public hearing. I'll open it. Any other proponents or opponents? Welcome.
Lieutenant here to answer any other questions that you may have.
Thank you. Anybody else? I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve resolution, R 250015? Motion by Councilman Mungard.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sunday. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Mayor. I had comments.
Ms. Klute.
I tried really fast.
Ms. Klute, go ahead.
Right. I'm for this. I'm, I think it's great to bring more alternatives in for our seniors, to have more opportunity for people to spend their entire lifetime in our community. One thing that I was got to thinking about, I happened to be driving by a different retirement area and noticed multiple vehicles there, a couple of our fire engines and an ambulance. And it just caused me to start thinking, and I've had an opportunity to talk to a few professionals, and while I am all for this, I think we need to, as a council, a city, think about things like this as we continue to grow and redevelop and expand areas about the additionals of these items that may request more of our services. I think it's something we need to be aware of, that we're asking more and more of our EMS people and our fire departments, and make sure that we don't sacrifice quality of service that these members of our teams are providing, because we're growing and redeveloping without thinking about the consequences of what we're doing to our public services. So, I'm absolutely for this. It's just something that I wanted to bring forward as something we, we need to think about.
Appreciate it. Any other discussion? Mr. Mungard.
Well, I'll just throw out that I'm also extremely pleased by what this is. It's a little bit more congested and more intensive than I would have preferred, but nonetheless, it's the correct direction to increase the housing stock in Papillion. I've been a long time, I've been a member of the congregation of that church since the day it was opened in this location. I've been to the existing buildings. They're wonderful. They're well-kept. I have great faith that you're going to come forward with a place that we'll all be proud of. So, thank you, and I'll vote for it.
And the closer we get to the age, the more I like the affordability idea.
Right. I just have one more question. We already have a couple of traffic circles. Do we have any idea how many people additional traffic we're going to be putting on Lincoln Street? And should we be discussing if we need another traffic circle there? Because I know coming down the one road that leads straight into their facility on the west, it can get a little congested there for Papillion congested.
Mr. Gibbons, do you want to mention that? She would have talked traffic as it went through the process.
There was considerable discussion at the planning commission about additional traffic for these uses as well, but again, the type of the intensity of the use doesn't warrant a traffic study for the number of units that they were proposed, but it's something that we do monitor with Mr. Clufner and with the city engineer, that if, if traffic does become an issue, we have the rights to, to look at that and do a study again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. Next is item, is item F10, Resolution R 250017, a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a special use permit to allow storage, limited access as a permitted use on the property legally described as Lot 1 Steel Ridge South, located on the southeast corner of Highway 370 and I-80. The applicant is U-Haul. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Any proponents or opponents? Welcome.
Connor Shields with R W Engineering and Surveying, 7525 North 101st Street. Yeah, it's just the southeast corner of 370 and I-80. It's a really weirdly shaped and graded lot. We're just trying to make it more welcoming as people come into the city of Papillion. We're going to add two, two buildings onto the lot. One's like a typical mini storage indoor, and then the other building is kind of like a pod storage area. So, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to ask, and-
Appreciate it. Mr. Sunday.
I, I have a question. Where, so which road would access your service here?
I can't remember the-
Would it be that off-road access up by Werner?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Douglas Graham. I'm the marketing company president of U-Haul here in Nebraska, 721 32nd Avenue in Council Bluffs. Going towards the end here, all I keep hearing is Papillion's growing, and I'd really look forward to being a part of servicing the community with storage and truck share. So, any questions?
Appreciate that. Thank you. And thanks for being here.
Yeah.
Mr. Fanslow.
I just have one quick question. So, the, the only, I'll call it outdoor storage would be the U-Haul product, correct? No outdoor storage? No outdoor storage from like personal use?
There would be no outdoor storage, yep. No storage doors to the street. It would all be indoor storage.
Okay, thanks.
Any other proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve resolution, R 250017? Motion by Councilman Sunday. Second by Councilman Gaines. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. Thanks for investing, and welcome to Papillion. Grade I-80 access. It's all the regular agenda items. Committee reports affordable housing met tonight. I don't remember who the chair is. Mr. Stube.
Yes. So, we had a meeting this, this evening with regard to affordable housing, and, and the situation is, is that there is a developer that's proposing a 70-unit townhome project down on 72nd and, and Shram Road, and I think it's three and four-bedroom units that he's proposing, which I understand has a potential rent of somewhere in the neighborhood of 2,600 up to 2,900. That particular developer apparently is, is considering doing what's called a project-based voucher program. In order for a project-based voucher program to be applicable, there has to be an application made to the Omaha Housing Authority for that to occur. So, there was a discussion with regard to whether consideration should be given to moving that forward to city council. It was four people that voted in, and it was a two-two tie. So, it's up to the developer to decide whether they want to bring it forward to the city council for consideration.
Thank you. Any other, Mr. Mungard.
Okay, question. I think this, the, this is the same one that was brought up previously to that committee when I was there. There was some discussion about moving that over to the Sarpy County Agency. Was there, did that discussion continue? Is there any decision on that?
Represent, excuse me, there's a representative there from Bellevue, but these are vouchers, apparently, that are available through O H A up in the city of Omaha, and so, they allow a certain number of project-based vouchers that, and this would be essentially vouchers that would come from the allocation of the city of Omaha. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I guess it makes sense. I guess we had some concern whether we were-
We had to go with the, the Omaha Housing Agency, and you're telling me, yes, we do. If it goes, it's Omaha Housing.
Yeah, if I can add it. Go ahead. Go ahead.
I-
The understanding I have-
We have other individuals on the committee that can answer if I'm incorrect. The understanding I have is that the project-based vouchers are not, they're not available within Sarpy County. That's part of the reason why that they're coming from. There's a, they're limited to a certain percentage of the total vouchers they have available, which are specifically identified as project-based versus the other term, which was unit-based, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
Pardon me?
Well, if, yeah, these project-based vouchers-
Can you pop back in real quick?
Project-based.
Hold on one second. Okay, now go ahead.
A project-based voucher goes with the unit, not the person. So, everybody in, living in this little development, 70-odd units, would be under Section 8, Government-Assisted Housing, everybody there. Whereas with the other type, I think it's, what'd you call it?
Eight.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the traditional tenant-based goes with the person. So, the people that are getting government-assisted housing tend to disperse throughout the community as opposed to go, all going into one, one spot. Sarpy had already used up their quota of, of the project-based vouchers. 20% of their total is permitted for project-based vouchers. They've already used it up in Sarpy County, so the only way they could potentially get it to Papillion would be through O H A. And hence the two-two vote, I guess.
Thank you for that update, and I don't think any other committees met. Any comments from the floor? Glad to see you.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and city staff. I want to take, I want to thank you in advance-
Can you give your name for the record?
Okay. My name is Christine Holder.
Thanks.
I want to thank you in advance for this brief moment to bring up some concerns we have about the, about the lack of handicap parking at the Shadow Lake Town Center. After seeing some elderly and disabled people struggling to get in the store because of how far away they had to park, and also, my mom has been experiencing mobility issues over the last year or so, and that's when I started noticing the situation. The problem is five below Skechers, Famous Footwear, Hallmark, Lane Bryant, and there may be other stores do not have designated handicap parking spots. So, I come to you tonight wondering what the solution to that problem would be, and how do we make those changes here in the community? I do have some pictures. They're not very good angles, but you can see that there are no handicap parking spots. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Ms. Klute.
And just for the record, she's also on the mayor's youth council, very involved, so thank you for everything you do. Appreciate that. Any other comments from the floor? Council comments?
Not much from the last couple of weeks. Been too cold to get out and do anything, but Back Night Golf did open up. If you haven't been there, it's in Shadow Lake. Subscription-based, Mr. Glover was there for the ribbon-cutting. Nice to see that investment, and they specifically targeted Papillion because of some of our demographics, so it's nice to have that there. The League of Municipalities had a meeting with the governor just to get an update on where he's at, but that was just before all the bills were being introduced. So, I think everything he shared, he's shared in the news and through different press conferences. Midlands Community Foundation had its annual gala. Number of folks were there, so appreciate everybody that attended that. They do a lot of important work in the community. I think that's most of the major updates, other than legislature. I think as of tonight, there's been 524 bills introduced, and I think there's still two days of bill introduction, one or two days of bill introduction. So, probably be a flurry of them in the next couple of days. I'm going to guess maybe 800 bills in total. We, I think I've mentioned before, we have a little bit of insight in a couple of different priorities, because League of Municipalities does a prioritization, and we, we'll see what that is. The United Cities will do a prioritization of what's important to the cities, and then we'll compare both of those, and if we see anything missing, we'll try to catch that gap and monitor those. But if you're aware of any bills that are being introduced that you're really interested in, make sure we're aware of that, so we can make sure those are being tracked in one of those mechanisms and keep you updated. The good news is, a couple of the bills that we had asked to be introduced, I think a couple of months ago, I gave you a sheet after the special session of bills we were interested in, and some of those did get introduced. So, I don't have a lot of hope they'll go very far, but at least we're getting into the discussion, and that's, a lot of that's around sales tax. So, appreciate all the input on that.
Any research on how many bills on an average happen each year, and how many actually get passed?
I don't think so, and I think it, it's changed a lot in the last couple of years too, because I think two sessions ago is when they started doing the Christmas tree bills, where they would take like 30 bills and cram it into one, and so, that's made it kind of hard. And then this session, they actually passed a bill that a senator can only introduce 20 bills, and so, it's kind of getting skewed right now from what normal has been, so. But the way the process is, anybody, any of them can introduce a bill. Every bill, it will get a hearing, and so, there's a lot of hearings, but to get to the floor for actual debate, for the most part, it's got to be prioritized. And a senator gets, can prioritize a couple of bills, a committee can prioritize a number of them, and the speaker can prioritize, prioritize a number, and we're in the long session. I don't think the priorities need to be set until like March 15th. That's really when we'll understand what's going to be on the floor and debated is once the priorities are set.
So, is that like, at, at the end, is it like 100 bills out of the 800, or?
If I had to speculate, it's pure guess, I'd say a couple hundred.
Couple hundred.
Maybe. Pure guess, though. So, we'll keep you updated. Beginning, if there's any bills that you specifically want us to track, make sure we're aware of that, because we do have a lot of eyes on them, and we track when the committee hearings are going to be, and so, we can go down and testify on those as well, either as a proponent or an opponent. So, keep us updated on that. I think that's all the major updates. Any, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Glover.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Please vote. We are adjourned.